Before we begin tonight, I'd like to recognize two residents who have recently passed on, Lori Sullivan, I'm sorry, Lori Freeman, excuse me, mixing the two up, age 60, a woman who has served the city in many ways, but not least of which is as a daughter of Joe Keith, who was longtime city employee. And Kevin Sullivan, also died way too young, at the age of 60, recently. Kevin was a superb athlete, graduated in 1976 from Newburyport High School. His name is on the wall of fame as a distinguished athlete, the brother-in-law of former mayor, Mary Ann Clancy, and a wonderful person to anybody who knew him. I'd just like for a moment of silence to recognize those two individuals. And I ask if you'll join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would ask the board to call the roll.
It's a roll call for the meeting of March 11th. Councillor Vogel.
Present.
Councillor Zede.
Here.
Councillor Devlin has informed me he will be a little late, Mr. President. Councillor Earl.
Present.
Councillor Agnew.
Here.
Councillor Junta.
Present.
Councillor Khan.
Present.
Councillor O'Brien.
Here.
Councillor Shan.
Present.
Councillor Tontar.
Here.
Councillor Conlon.
Present.
We have 10, we have a quorum.
Good. Do we have any late file items?
There are no late file items. There is one communication on your desk from Councillor Junta that I think he will explain at the appropriate moment.
Okay, and we'll take that item up during committee reports. I know Councillor Junta will share a few items with us. Let's start the public comment. We have just two people who wish to speak. It looks like Chris Nay. Would you please give us your address?
Sure. My name is Christopher and I'm the pastor at Central Congregational Church. I live in Amesbury at 64 Highland Street. So I'm here with great gratitude for the support that the City Council has offered to our church in support of the work that we are doing, and also with deep regret about the confusion and controversy that has emerged in the last several weeks regarding the CPA grant, our historic preservation agreement, and other repair work that we are doing in our building. As you know, the City Council awarded a CPA grant to the church in July of 2017 in the amount of $75,000. That grant supported the restoration of the front of the face, the front of the church, the steeple, four clock faces, and repair to damage to the exterior roof trim on the front of the sanctuary building. The minutes of that meeting include an understanding that we, as a congregation, would enter into historic restriction for the exterior facade of the front of the building. The background of this is that in February of 2017, several volunteers from our congregation began working with city staff to submit a funding request to the Community Preservation Committee focused primarily on the steeple. That application made reference to other repairs that we hoped to do in the future, but we did not ask for support for those additional repairs. They were not part of our CPA application. After several meetings, the CPC approved a recommendation to fund a portion of the work on the front of the building. The grant amounted to about half of the total cost of the repairs of the steeple, clockface, and painting. And when the grant was approved, in July, our volunteers began to work on the historical restriction that corresponded to that grant, the front of the building. So later in 2017, a portion of the funds were released so that work could begin. At the same time, volunteers from our congregation began to work closely again with city staff to repair the historic restriction documents. City staff provided copies of documents from other historic restrictions on other structures in the city. At that time, we were not represented by any attorneys. We had worked, we had hoped to work with two consultants on those documents, but those relationships didn't work out. And as a result, our work on the historic restriction proceeded with stops and starts, as is often the case when it depends on volunteer work. But on January 23rd of this year, we met with Historical Commission to discuss the draft, the document focused on that front portion of the building, as was specified in the grant from the CPC. The Historic Committee approved the document generally, but told us that we needed to submit it to the State Historical Commission first, which is what we did. At no time did we ever support, or ever submit a request for support for the rear portion of the building. We were clear in our discussions with city staff that these were only for the front of the building. And when we did decide that we had the funds raised internally to do work on the rear portion of the building, we again began to work closely with city staff. Staff reported to our folks that we needed a special permit to replace windows, so we applied to the planning board.
Reverend Nay, we have a two-minute limit on--
I'm a preacher, I apologize. Am I done?
Close. Please wrap it up.
Okay. We were surprised that we were told that the windows needed to be restored rather than replaced. We considered restoration, but concluded it would be prohibitively expensive and would leave us with less energy-efficient windows. It was at that point that we consulted legal counsel, who offered the opinion that a permit was not required, and that is when we filed an appeal of the decision on our behalf. We are grateful for the support that we have received and hope that we get this all resolved quickly and amicably, so that we continue to do the work, which is our core mission of serving this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Amanda Moore, of, is it 10 North Atkinson?
Yes, 10 North Atkinson Street. Amanda Moore. I'm not a preacher, mine is short. This is also on the same topic that Reverend Nay just presented, but I just wanted to offer further clarification about these two issues, which are often confused with each other. They're seeming to be overlapping, but actually stand alone separately. In 2017, we received a community preservation funding for the repair of the exterior of the sanctuary building of Central Congregational Church and the steeple, an expensive job. The church will continue now as a prominent feature with Newbury, of Newburyport's skyline with all the digits on the clock now. In a totally unrelated process, Central Church applied for permission to replace 42 large windows in the rear portion of the building. This project would be funded by the church, no city money involved in any way. The new windows would be, would replicate the existing windows in size and style and looks, but would actually open and close. They would not have panes falling out into the rooms, and they would be energy efficient, saving money and resources for the years to come. Our wish is for peaceful resolution that would allow Central Church to be the best stewards of our property, for the church itself and the community we serve. Thank you.
Thank you.
We only had two people sign up tonight, so we can proceed. I think it's time for a presentation by the planning office on the comprehensive zoning updates that have been completed and upon which we are going to act fairly soon. So, can we keep it to 15 minutes, Andy?
Definitely.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President and members of the council. For the record, my name is Andy Port. I'm the Director of Planning and Development, and with me tonight is Courtney Starling from Community Opportunities Group, our faithful consultant for the last couple of years, working on revisions to our zoning ordinance. For those of you who are councillors and citywide councillors who have heard concerns from constituents once in a while on something related to permitting or development of any kind, one of the reasons we're updating the zoning ordinance is to address those issues much better. And so we've drafted out some chapters, and we want to have a formal rollout tonight of our process going forward and summarize a bit of where we've been, and then ask for your participation and your feedback on this project as we move forward. As the Council President mentioned, we plan on in the coming months, bring you forward, the whole rewrite of the zoning ordinance to you. I have over there, I didn't pick it up, but there's a 168-page zoning ordinance, pretty lengthy, lots of text, lots of provisions. It's basically a very long legal document that dictates how land is used in the city. And the master plan was recently adopted, and so part of our goal here and our responsibility is to codify in the zoning ordinance some objectives that were called out in that master plan. So with that, I'm going to pass it on to Courtney Starling, who will give an overview of our process to date and where we're going.
I'm not a preacher, I'm a planner. Good luck, guys. Can I take this?
Sure.
So that I can go doo-lee-doo? All right, cool.
Yep.
My name's Courtney Starling. I'm a planner for Community Opportunities Group. I've been working with the city of Newburyport for nearly five years now on both this project and the master plan. So some of you have probably seen me before, if not most of you. Really quick, since we are giving the 15-minute elevator pitch, and I bet I'm at 12 minutes already, I would like to give you a quick update on where we are with the project, where we are with public process, what we're doing with the specific revisions that we're working with right now, and then take a little time for questions and comments. We're getting there? That's me at the finish line, just so you know, five years. Right now, we have several sections in progress that are interrelated, and so they'll kind of all remain in draft form until all of them are ready to go. And that is our table of uses, which regulate what you can do on a lot in a given district; the dimensional requirements, which control bulk and mass of a structure on a lot; parking, I guess nobody, I think that goes without saying; signs, mostly for commercial messaging for businesses; performance standards, that's things like stormwater management and, you know, really site performance issues, construction management, that kind of stuff; and design We have a fairly fast timeline getting to the finish. You know, after several years now, we feel that it's appropriate to bring this to, bring this to its conclusion. So right now, we are rolling out tonight at City Hall just to kind of put this on people's radar that we're getting back up and, or that we're up and moving. And we hope to be within the individual wards fairly shortly with ward councillors, as well as at-large councillors and members of the zoning advisory committee, which is comprised of people from the planning board, zoning board of appeals, the city council, and quite a few others, quite frankly. But we have a group of people that meets together every Friday, every other Friday morning to discuss the zoning ordinance and our individual drafts. In April, we're going to finish up with some more of our sections, move into a public forum to, that's out of the wards and something in general for the whole city to be invited to. May, we're closing out a few more sections, giving another update to the planning board, board of appeals, and I'm planning to see you again then. June has some site plan and design review stuff. Again, we're going to go for one last round of ward meetings, and then we'll hope to introduce this to city council for July to begin the adoption process. Right now, we've been in the process of working on the representative neighborhoods report. This has to do with the fact that we've inherited a zoning ordinance that was not designed for the city of Newburyport, but was designed for some post-war subdivision in the middle of nowhere and kind of superimposed over the city. So right now, we have a set of regulations that's very hard to apply literally to the city, simply because they don't match. So we've been doing a project, trying to bring the regulations into conformance with what's actually on the ground. And so as part of that, we want to understand the issues, what the, you know, what's wrong with having dimensional requirements that don't look like anything on the ground versus, you know, what's the cost of changing it, what's the cost of leaving it alone, and kind of looking at what those, what the issues are on both sides of it. Moving forward, we did decide that what was best would be to try to bring the dimensional requirements more in line with what's on the ground. We put together what we're calling representative neighborhoods, where we took blocks out of, residential blocks out of individual zoning districts and individual neighborhoods. We chose them because they were like the blocks around them. And so, and after we chose them, we sent them to the city council for them to take a look at it and, you know, more or less bless whether or not these blocks did look like the ones that are around them, and therefore could be considered representative. There has been a history of downzoning and rezoning. I'm going to start in the 80s. This new report has a much longer history than that, but I'm going to just do the lightning show of what's been going on. We had early downzoning over here on the Turkey Hill side of things. At that point, the subdivision was planted, it was R2, it is now R1. The difference in minimum lot size required is 8,000 square feet, so almost all of these lots are deficient, simply because they were, they were subdivided before the zoning was changed. We have that happen again with a little chunk down by Route 1 in Smart Growth Overlay District. That was actually Smart Growth Overlay. This is a little chunk down by one that's been rezoned. It used to be R3 and is now R2. These areas used to be R3 and are now R2. These areas used to be R2 and are now HS, HSR-A and HSR-B.
High Street Residential.
Thank you. I always get the acronyms, I jumble them up, it turns into alphabet soup for me. So we do, and then we have the most recent rezoning over by Port Plaza, where we had something go from B2, B1 to R3. And so with these downzonings and rezonings that have occurred, while the zoning designation has changed, the building and the lands have not, or the land and the buildings have not. And so what's happened is to address one issue, we've now created another issue where we have zoning requirements for the dimensions that have nothing to do with the zoning district that, or nothing to do with where these properties actually are. And so following the rezoning, we do have this situation where we just have this basic inability to apply the regulations. Over the years, this has resulted in a lot of people coming to the planning board and the board of appeals for relief. A lot of times, these are just, you know, your average single-family homeowners. This can be a fairly intimidating and expensive process, but it's kind of what, you know, the best, you know, best that we have, given that the regulations are the way that we are, in order for people to, you know, even for a basic modification, maybe somebody wants to just put on a rear addition, bump out their kitchen a little bit, they find themselves absolutely unable to comply with the regulations because they're required to have, you know, 10,000-square-foot lot, when their lot's always been 3,900 square feet, they're required to have 20 feet of, you know, front yard setback when the house has already always been at the street. And so it becomes very difficult when we have all of these regulations that are just, you know, just have nothing to do with what's actually happening. And because of that, it's created a lot of unpredictability for the residents, for their neighbors, for developers, for, for most people in town. When we don't have a good code that fits, we just have a lot of things that occur outside of the code.
And we just add one thing to that word unpredictability. That applies not only to the applicants, that often times when they have a home, it can be a national register or district, which is a proportion of Newburyport, the early built-out area. A lot of those folks are being sent to the zoning board of appeals for special permits or forbearances, relief, as we call it, because the zoning doesn't allow, is a default, that they can do certain things, they have to come in for that special approval. And part of that is because of the dimensional requirements that are substantially different than what the neighborhoods are there today. As I already mentioned, a lot of zones, like this is, this is not unique to Newburyport, we're basically overlaid on top of the community. And that unpredictability is not only for the applicant who's coming in, it doesn't really know when they come in definitively, are they going to be able to get approval or not for what they want to do. They have to wait for the board to do that process and to hear concerns from above, what the butters and the rest of the neighborhood doesn't necessarily know what to expect either, because instead of falling into the dimensional requirements that we can see in our ordinance, everyone has to say, well, we have to see what happens when the special permit or the barance is reviewed by the board. So that unpredictability is something we're trying to address, both for the applicants and homeowners who are doing projects, but also for the neighborhoods.
Reasonable expectations on either side are what we're shooting for. So to get there, this is for you, Sharif, just so everybody knows, this was a special request from Sharif. What we have here are a lot of pictures, or a lot of different colors, but what we are trying to figure out is, because we have this issue particularly in the R2, when we had a lot of land that was previously zoned R3, which has much lower dimensional requirements, has been put into a district that has much higher dimensional requirements. Largely, when that happened, it was mostly related to use issues and in particular multifamily housing-related issues. And so while moving to an R2 district might preclude some multifamily uses, it also then created this situation where we have all of these lots that have absolutely nothing to do with the zoning district. So what we're proposing to deal with the dimensional disparity between the downzoned R2 and the naturally R2 is to create two sub-districts within the R2 district. This is just to deal with dimensions, not to deal with uses. And so the idea is that we would have R2A or R2B or some other moniker, R2 blue, R2 green, I don't really, you know, it's neither here nor there. The idea, though, is that one district is more dense than the other R2 district. And so when we're looking at drawing the lines right now of where that might be in the R2 district, we have been looking over in this corner by Marlboro Street and also considering Bronfield Street. These darker lots, what's important about this is that these lots are smaller than 7,500 square feet. The darkest lots themselves are smaller than 5,000 square feet. Even after we change the zoning, lots smaller than 5,000 square feet are still going to be pre-ex, they're still going to be too small. That's still an undersized lot. But this is just, oh, I should mention, white lots are the lots that are either in mixed use or non-residential use. And so what you get to, once we start getting into the yellows, these are bigger lots. So this over here, which is naturally R2, makes sense to kind, you know, makes sense to keep in the lower-density R2. But as we start moving closer to downtown, what we start seeing is smaller and smaller lots. And so right now, we're trying to figure out where it might make sense to draw the R2 sub-district on this side of town. And just because you're seeing green lines doesn't mean this is a done deal, this is the beginning of the conversation, just as a, just so everybody knows, it's just the beginning. But this is kind of what, where we're thinking of right now, where this line might be. And when we had spoken, one of the questions that Councillor Zede had asked about this area in particular is, what is the transition between here? This is obviously bigger lots, these are obviously smaller, but what's going on? And here, in an answer to that, they're getting smaller. And so that's what we have going on, on the east side of the R2 district. On the west-hand side, we should go in the right direction, we have what's going on over here. And so these are, what's the name of these condos again? Parker Ridge? I'm sorry.
Parker Ridge.
Parker Ridge. Yeah, so these are the Parker Ridge condos right here, and so they, those are just, because it's an extremely large lot, it's just kind of taken out of the sample. That lot is not further, is not buildable for any further units, and so for all intents and purposes, it's not subject to much of the discussion. But where we've been debating is where to cut it over here. We believe that High Street is naturally the divider for this side of the lower-density R2, but on this side, there has been some question as we move away from the more dense downtown and start moving into the less dense areas as we get closer to 95 and over by Mosley and Maudsley Park. And so, and so right now, this one, we've had a little bit less discussion with, since we haven't met with those councillors yet. But this is kind of what we're looking at over here, too, about where potential dividing lines might be. Again, beginning of the conversation, but just wanted to start showing some of the lot level analysis of what the conditions are over here.
Just to add to that, for those of you who are from the layup of the city, driven down High Street, you've driven through a lot of different neighborhoods and streets, generally speaking, what we're trying to capture here is the fact that as you're ready to get up from the downtown, even in that area that previously was R2, that R3, that was downzoned from R3 to R2, that there's a gradation. The house lots, the lots in general, tend to be smaller, more compact as you go towards the downtown, that's just natural. But what we're trying to reflect here is not a change in the uses that are allowed in the R2 district, which will remain essentially as it is, but to actually reflect the smaller lot sizes closer to the downtown as they are on the ground, making more of what's there today conforming rather than non-conforming. And the same thing for, rather, where those dimensional apartments get slightly adjusted, but they get adjusted to match more what's in the neighborhoods. So on a go-forward basis, you'd be able to rebuild or build what you see in the surrounding neighborhood, rather than being forced to build something that doesn't look long enough in the neighborhood, because it's too large or too small.
But overall, because we are trying to address these, these different typologies between, you know, more dense and a slightly less dense area in the R2, it really is about finding, you know, finding the right balance for where the sub-district lines will lie. And so that's something that we don't expect to answer tonight, and something that we expect to take a lot of public comment on moving forward. Moving on, just to tell you a little bit about some of the other things that we've been doing in addition to the representative neighborhoods report. We've been working on the table of uses. This has been in progress for actually quite a while, two years or so, and we are kind of working on closing it out. This slide is really more about some of the commercial uses as opposed to the residential uses. But one of the things that we're working to do is simplify the uses to increase flexibility. The current table of uses is pretty specific, it's got a bunch of line items, and then within each line, it then goes by zoning district. If these, if the use categories are slightly more flexible, a zoning administrator has an easier time classifying a business. Again, we're more, in this, in the world of uses, we're slightly more concerned about making sure that we have, our commercial uses are in good order, particularly for the Business Park, Downtown, Story Avenue, and the Medical Area, to make sure that Newburyport's economy remains competitive. We are, we are looking at expanding uses in the Business Park. We do a lot of outreach with the Business Park to make sure that expanded uses are complementary. Issues in the Business Park in particular have to do with traffic and particularly pedestrian traffic, and so those are issues that we need to be mindful of. And we also are mindful that we want to be encouraging mixed use, particularly as the waterfront continues to be addressed and with the adoption of the Smart Growth District. And we are very much looking at zoning to preserve the affordability of housing and the housing diversity of Newburyport. This is both affordable housing with capital A, capital H, and also naturally market-rate housing that is affordable and protecting that housing stock. So we're looking at, again, not just the big capital A, capital H, but the whole gamut to provide community housing, that is lifecycle housing for, from cradle to grave, so that Newburyport is a place that you can be born and stay. After that, we're also looking at accessory uses. Fun quirk of zoning is that zoning always talks about first the principal use of a lot and then the accessory use. So if you want to take a single-family home, the principal use of that lot is going to be the residential use, and accessory use of that lot is probably the incidental parking of vehicles. So the, and it's, an accessory use is incidental to that principal use, and so there's some things that really are, that kind of start to become a little dicier with that. Home occupations are one of those things, so we've been discussing those. Home daycare is not currently authorized in the table of uses, so we need to take care of that, because that needs to be in there by state law. We need to, we're working on clarification for accessory retail uses in the Business Park. A good example is the Riverwalk Brewery. Principal use is manufacturing, the accessory use is a taproom. And so talking about where that, you know, to what degree a use is accessory to the principal use is important with manufacturing, particularly, let's say, let's say somebody manufactures bento boxes, and then they set up a lunch counter, and then they have a full restaurant. An accessory use can kind of, you know, expand, and so having good regulations to kind of address that, make sure that it's possible, but also not to the point that it is crowding out your traditional business and industry uses. And the last thing is, we want to address accessory agricultural uses and agro-tourism. The zoning administrator is seeing an increase in applications for people who are looking to do, like farm-to-table meals and things like that on their farms, and so we want to make sure that we facilitate that, too, provided that, you know, they have parking in there. Parking, we're just getting to use, or getting to work on the residential side, we've been focusing predominantly on the commercial side. We want to put in new provisions for shared-use parking. That's for, let's say, you have a mixed-use building, the first floor is retail, the, well, let's go with office, and the upper stories are residential, shared-use parking. The office use has the parking spaces during the day, the residential use has it at night. That makes it easier to build slightly less parking to serve all of your needs. We want to put in parking waivers, provided that people do a parking man, parking demand management plan to prove that you need to demonstrate that they do have enough parking to serve their use, but they can apply for a waiver, which would be helpful. Overall, in the Business Park, we're looking to reduce parking requirements so that we can reduce impervious surface and also reducing a number of unnecessary parking spaces that businesses are having to build. Downtown, we're looking to simplify the requirements and codify credits for pre-existing nonconformity. That's currently done, it's just more of a policy than a regulation, so we're putting into policy. Story Avenue, we're looking at improving landscape standards in the big parking lots. And Route 1, we want to make sure that we're screening some of the resident signs. I'm getting close to the end, just so you guys know, sorry. Signs, we've had to completely overhaul the ordinance, there is a major court case that pretty much nullified everybody's sign ordinances in all of the country, so we are moving forward with content-neutral sign regulations. What we're looking-- What we're looking to is make them easy to calculate. We are making some minor changes, particularly for downtown, that the signage is per tenant instead of by building. That way, we don't have the last man in ending up with no available signage to put on his building, and it also makes it much easier for them to figure out how much they're allowed to have. We are not currently looking, we've had a lot of discussion about A-frame signs, we're not looking to change that, that will remain over with the City Council. For the Business Park, we are looking at giving them the ability to have directory signs. Right now, you see kind of a proliferation of different signs on the corner for different building, your businesses, to kind of help the trucks navigate through the park, we're making it easier for them to consolidate those and have official signs. And right now, we have not made any major changes to Story Avenue, Route 1, there's some very specific languages for shopping centers, that was put into the ordinance in 1992, and currently, we are proposing to carry that forward. Thank you. I don't think it was 15, I'm really sorry, but it was darn close.
Thank you.
Close. I think there are probably some things that were presented that councilors have questions about, so I'd like to entertain a few questions, understanding that we have a long way to go, there will be public meetings, there will also be ordinance changes filed that are going to use a lot of our time and effort using the regular process that we do, that we use to examine ordinances related to zoning. That involves the planning board as well. So, councilors, are there questions? I see several. I'm going to start on the right-hand side, Councilor Jenta.
Just a curiosity question, what is a content-neutral sign? What does that mean?
That means that in order to administer the regulation, you should not have to read the sign to be able to. So basically, what we traditionally do is we'll put in regulations for like a real estate sign, or a directory sign, or a political sign.
Exemptions for election signs, you know, that's what I'm doing.
And so at this point, in order to regulate a sign, you can basically only regulate the shape, the materials, and where it's, the size, and where it's located, but nothing about what it is or how it is. So if you have to, if you have to read a sign to apply a regulation, then you have a regulation that is not.
That's a recent case law from the Supreme Court. While I, as an individual planner, I think that there'll be evolving case law that helps to refine that in more detail.
And this planner totally agrees.
We're trying to make sure that we're, at present, in compliance with all the cases.
Charlie will bring us on.
This is something that's affecting every community, not just Newbury.
Does that satisfy you?
Yeah, thank you, yeah.
Councilor Zied?
So, back to that map of the yellows and the shades, so will you be able to quantify in any area what percentage will be conforming after the change? Will you be able to say 83% of lots will be conforming, or if we move the line over here, the percentage drops or increases? Is that doable, or is that difficult to?
Every time you move the line, I would have to recalculate on a lot-by-lot basis.
Okay.
I can do it, but I would ask you to only have me do it once.
Maybe when we get to the final draft, it makes sense, probably, to just, just to see what we've really done, you know, have we gotten to whatever our goal is, say it's 85% conformance, you know, because that's the objective measure.
And the raw data for the representative neighborhoods, I can, I mean, that I can do pretty easily, but for the entire city, that's, that's a, that's a more difficult thing. So I have good data on about 500 lots.
Okay, thank you.
Out of about 6,500, if anybody's wondering.
Councilor Tontar?
So, doesn't it make sense to add at least frontage as another metric rather than just lot size?
Frontage is one of the metrics, and it's one of the ones we've measured for. This was just because when we, this was actually, I wasn't kidding when I said it was for Sharif because he had very specifically asked for that area. He'd asked about the lot sizes and to see what the transition is. But frontage and the actual locations of the structures and the representative, the representative neighborhoods have been measured.
Okay, but I'd be concerned if by having a map that shows just, just lot size, that we, we devalue the other determinants and therefore get incorrect impression as to what we're doing.
Yes. Yeah, this is, this was just for tonight, just to start the conversation.
It's all my fault, Charlie.
To be very clear, the end of viewers, the story has not ended. More factors will be included.
You're right, you're right, there are other dimensional requirements we didn't get into, for instance, you know, lot coverage, anything like that.
Front side, rear yard.
Right.
And lot covered open space and minimum lot size. So minimum lot size is only one, but that, you know, that is kind of a big one and a determinant, so it divides it, it'll be outside of frontage.
Other questions from councilors? Hearing none, may I ask, for the, for the public's viewing pleasure, or if they have some spare time, where can they see the results of this research and these recommendations?
Thank you, President. We actually, by the end of this week, we plan on having a page on the city's website, be linked from the main page, but also from the planning department page, and that will be a project page for the zoning update. We'll have draft documents for the chapters we've done and the ones we're revising in the future, those will be posted there as well. And any updates on meetings that we'll be having, that the general public may want to attend, and other related information that might tie into that. We may also have a, an engagement, a sort of a survey-type engagement, and we'll provide a link to that from that page as well, to get some survey information from folks. Thank you.
If there are no other questions, thank you, Andy. Mayor?
I just have one question. When we started this process several years ago, when you talked about the use of land in these places, that's still part of the process.
Yes, thank you for bringing it up. Yeah, we are still removing a number of overlays that are actually, in our opinion, not necessary anymore because the relevant pieces of land have been developed underneath those ordinances. So rather than complicate things, we're removing some overlays. We could speak to that in some more detail, but yes, to that point, we are simplifying the ordinance. And I should add as well, the, with the dimensional table and the parking regulations, we're also simplifying the way that folks will read those tables. Where there is consistency between uses and the parking requirements, we're trying to collapse that table so that it becomes a little more easy for people to read than, you know, a four- to six-page table.
Yeah, it's, it's impenetrable to someone who's not familiar with zoning.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor? You're up.
Good evening, President McConnell, members of the City Council, members of the public. Quick update, the couple orders in the City Council packet, I just, I'm a little concerned about us moving a little prematurely in terms of reducing the monthly fee in the garage. I just ask you to really have a little deeper financial analysis of that before you move forward. As you know, these analysis on what we needed to charge in the garage were all part of this process of approval, and I want to be sure that we have sufficient revenue out of parking to pay for the bond, as we have promised the taxpayers of Newbury Port. In addition, you also have an order in your packet on 41(c)(1/2). We began talking about this well over a year ago, submitted a home rule petition to the legislature in order to have a municipal election where we could adopt 41(c)(1/2). This is a really important piece of legislation for our city, which allows us to give additional relief to members who are seniors and property tax owners. There are still parameters around which, in the comprehensive packet put together by our Finance Director Ethan Manning and our assessor Joe Brennan, in particular, reviewed by our Finance Team, you'll see that there are some options, age range 65, 70, you know, what percentage are we going to go after. But keep in mind also that this is a program that we do get reimbursement from the state. Now, at one point, we had talked about, why don't we just make changes to 41(c)? That still will only impact 49 individuals in the city. That is not going to help what we're trying to do to homeowners who are senior, who are really struggling with the increased property taxes. We have the potential of, if we look at age 70, 188 seniors who are homeowners, or if we go to, at 70, or 194 if age 65 is selected. And based on those age limits, there's a range between 82 and $131,000 in reimbursement from the state. So this program is not going to be really expensive for our city to run, but in the long run, it certainly will help a tremendous amount of seniors in our community. So your task, I am assuming this will go to Budget and Finance, is to review the packet that we sent you in terms of the different parameters, hopefully continue to move forward so that we can set those parameters and then begin working with a community group that will begin marketing this program as we approach the November election. Looking forward to working with you on what I believe is a really, really important program for our seniors in the city. Firebase DMS, thank you Budget and Finance, this Thursday night at 5:30, they will be reviewing Terry Rooney, who was our consultant, who offered her research expertise in putting together, I think, this really comprehensive packet that you've all had a chance to review, and look forward to discussing that further with you. And I know the chief will be there and will be doing a short presentation this Thursday. Also, we will be reviewing, if I push back, the proposals for the conceptual design of the firehouse on Story Ave. You also have an order before you tonight, this will supplement a budget item of $17,500 last year for protective clothing. It's more, it's important more now than ever that firefighters have second sets of equipment. You see the memo from the chief in terms of cancer rates going through the roof for firefighters, and protective equipment is absolutely critical. So this transfer before you will buy eight additional sets of protective clothing for our firefighters. We are also meeting with Dewberry this week, as you know, they were the people who had the contract for the MVP, the household vulnerabilities program, and we'll be looking at further protections of the wastewater treatment plant, and that, of course, we want to occur in conjunction with the work StanTech is doing on the rail trail. So, and everyone have a happy St. Patrick's Day, and I will have a very happy St. Patrick's Day this year, because I don't have to sing or tell jokes at the house event. They're moving it off to September and hopefully doing something different, so have a St. Patty's Day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions of the mayor? Thank you, Mayor Holliday. All right, I think we can walk through the consent agenda. Work out the steps.
Which consists this evening of the approval of the minutes for the February 25th meeting. There's one transfer, transfer of 40, health insurance, $30,500, to fire, clothing, $28,000, clerk administration, $2,500. That's to go to Budget and Finance. There are five communications. Communication 121, the annual audit of the city's FY 2018 statements, that's to go to Budget and Finance. Communication 123, comprehensive update of the Newbury Port zoning ordinance, to go to Planning and Development. Communication 124 is the 2019 Chamber of Commerce events, that's to go to Public Safety. Communication 125 is the Class II vehicle license for Sunoco, to go to license and permits. Communication 126, gold purple for Alzheimer's, 615, 2019, that's to go to Public Safety. There are two reappointments. First one, appointment 89, Paul Healy of 89 of N Street, to the Concom until 51, 2022. Appointment 90, Dr. Sam Morabi, 7 Brown Square to the Board of Health until 41, 2022. And that is the consent agenda this evening.
Motion approved and seconded. Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Closed. It is done. Let's get into the regular agenda now. What we want to do with the mayor's update? We don't have anything on our desks, do we, Richard?
Yeah, we do.
We do? I didn't have one up here, okay, fine, thank you.
Motion to receive and file.
Second.
Moved and seconded, receive and file. Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Communications.
Communication 120 is a letter from Michael De Sette with respect to the Community Preservation Committee and the Central Congregational Church. It is actually signed by the mayor, as agreed to, and with that, there is a section of Order 41 that describes Project 5, the Central Congregational Steeple Project.
Motion to refer to committee on Budget and Finance.
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Jenta. Discussion. Councilor Eggerman, sorry, please.
So after we were made aware on the committee that the Central Congregational Church was in litigation with the city, I recalled that we had given them money, and so I asked to have a committee hearing last week, we held it about five days ago. There were two purposes for the committee meeting, and Mike De Sette attended, and so did Ammantha Moore, who spoke earlier to tonight. Purpose one was what happened, and purpose two was what can we learn from this, for the CPA program? So on the first, you heard, you heard testimony during public comment, we took similar testimony that night. I will say, I lost control of that meeting. Me, Tallerman, and Costa was there representing the church, and the first time in my career, I couldn't get the guy to shut up. It was kind of like that scene in Dog Day Afternoon where Dustin Hoffman's just screaming, Attica, Attica. And so just in future, if you guys have committee meetings, just be aware of that with these guys.
It was Dustin Hoffman, but go ahead.
Oh, not Dustin Hoffman, it was Al Pacino.
Al Pacino.
Sorry.
Good correction.
Wrong little guy with the dark hair.
Yeah.
First, it appears, you know, the application was pretty detailed, and it looks like staff actually really helped with that application. So it looks like city staff helped write it, so that, that's the first finding. The next finding is that, you know, by the time it got to us, you know, what we had is what you have in the third page, which just said, "The applicant shall execute a preservation restriction on the exterior facade of the structure." And many of you remember that I and others have been hammering Mike De Sette, the Chair of the CPC, over the years to make sure we get these preservation restrictions, so that, in my mind, it's legal, but definitely it's fair, that the taxpayers are getting something. And you'll see later tonight, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna take out a Committee One for the Unitarian Church, which was more like what I've seen in my five years, where it covers the whole building. So with the Central Congregational Church, I don't know what was in the mind of the applicants at the time, but I do know what was in our report and what was in my mind, and there was a, there seems to be a discrepancy. The understanding I had is that the order was to put a preservation restriction on the whole structure, which is what we normally do. Lessons going forward, also, if you'll notice in the letter at the bottom, it says, "The letter from Mike De Sette when he awarded the grant, CPA funds," this is their form letter, "shall be dispersed only after completion of the approved project, more fully described in your application, and after," and then there are various requirements, but one of them is, "receipt of final funding is conditioned upon final execution recording of a preservation restriction on the exterior of the property." Well, obviously, that didn't happen. What Mike testified is that usually it doesn't happen. So usually what happens is the applicant comes in, we're talking about private applicants, and they, they get the money released early. And in fact, there was an email in the, in the record where our staff originally was suggesting that 70,000 of the 75 be granted right away, and Mike said, "No," I was telling you what it said in the email, "let's hold back 25,000 so that there's some incentive for them to do the restriction." So the problem is, of course, we had an 18-month gap, and then the restriction finally came in. I guess, again, on the individual case, I'm turning it over to the Budget and Finance Committee because they have purview over CPA, they process all that. And Chair Tontar was at the meeting, so he heard a lot of it, but I wanted the public to hear as well, I didn't write up a report. Look, two things. First of all, I, you know, I still, I still feel, at least since, since it's my committee that handles these preservation easements, this was not done properly, and it's not consonant with what we do for other projects. If you take city money, we expect you're going to preserve the whole historic resource, and you're not going to pick parts of it. Again, that may have been their intent, but that wasn't our intent. And then the second is, going forward, I think we really need to think really hard about whether we disperse any funds unless we actually comply with what these award letters say. There's been, I think, way too much looseness on this. For example, there's still the $25,000 that the Central Congregational Church is trying to get, and, you know, I don't think that should go because we still have a preservation restriction, and they, they've submitted it to the state, but they've never submitted it to us. And then finally, more controversially, you know, after all the gymnastics we did over the Custom House, and, you know, I don't need to take you through that again. the custom house, and, you know, I don't need to take you through that again, but we maybe want to think about not giving money to any private organizations. Because if this is what's gonna happen, you know, it really does not serve the public. This is a mistake. We have plenty of assets to take care of that belong to the public. So for example, Bartlett Mall, Atkinson Common, I mean, you name it. And this is very frustrating that we're giving out taxpayer dollars, and these are dollars that can't be used for capital improvements, for city-owned things, and then we were sued. So I think that has to be taken into account, and I turn it over to the committee.
Thank you. So the motion was?
Refer to Budget and Finance.
Budget and Finance. So let's keep that in mind and try to restrict our comments to that. I let this go a little bit because I know this is something that's been publicly discussed, and it probably needs a fair airing, and we'll also get it in committee, but I think we're hearing tonight. Counselor Z.
My only question about the referral specifically, not the content, is that in conversations with Mr. President, we are expecting the city solicitor to come and address us at an upcoming meeting.
At our next meeting.
At our next meeting. So my discomfort with it is, you know, I'd like to have the conversation about the larger CPA issues that we have. I'm just nervous about having a discussion about something that's in litigation against the city. So I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there. Do we want to just, you know, table it for a moment and take it up when the city solicitor, I mean, pardon me, but I'm in the dark. I don't really know anything about the lawsuit.
Yeah.
I'm not, haven't seen it, so I don't even know what I'm talking about, to be honest. All I know is that I don't want to have an open meeting. You know, there are a few reasons for executive session, but that is supposedly one of them. I understand that there may also, just, again, my knowledge is from the newspaper, so that's the extent of my knowledge. That's my concern. As a member of Budget and Finance, I'm asking if we get it, what are we, are we gonna talk about it openly? Do we want to talk about it? Does it make sense for us to do and still protect those that we represent? I don't know the answer because I don't know, I don't know everything.
Counselor Tontar?
Yeah, I would suggest that we, we can refer it to Budget and Finance, but we should consult with the city solicitor on this. Because I certainly don't know whether or not we should discuss it publicly until, until there's some solution to the lawsuit. I think we could discuss the broader policy issues that are involved. We could use this as a vehicle to discuss that. I'm a little worried, I mean, that, you know, our code says that the, you know, the planning department is under the purview of the, of the Planning Development Committee, although, you know, the finances were involved, so it's almost shared. I know we said we didn't want to have joint, I think we should both look at it because there is that aspect, it really is a serious, about what staff did in this case and whether or not, and what they will do in the future. And that really doesn't have anything, I don't think. It may, actually, I don't know what's going on in the lawsuit either. So it, yeah.
Yeah. Well, that was definitive.
Yeah. I, it's, it's, you know, it's up in the air.
Counselor Z. I'm sorry, Counselor Jenta.
I just want to make mention, and Amanda Moore said it at the mic, just so everybody understands, when you look at the money they got from the CPA, there's nowhere in there does it talk about windows. So I think the lawsuit, from what we heard at public comment, is about windows, but what we're sending to committee, the whole presentation that they got money for, none of, the window men, the windows are never mentioned in it, as far as I could read. So I think they are two separate subjects. But the planning director may be able to give us the ultimate decision on that.
Would you yield the planning director for me? Thank you.
Thank you. I agree with the counsel. I think generally, I have spoken with counsel, and generally, these are separate bifurcated issues. Certainly from a policy level, as Counselor Eggerman pointed out, I think it's something we need to look at, both in applications we've done in the past and closing those and on a go-forward basis, some of the corrections we've talked about, some of those things that we'll take care of, and our new staff planner will broach a dispute on those. But I do think they are largely separate issues, and so the question of the policy question, even the details of this from the CPA end, I think can be discussed in committee without overlapping with the details of the case.
Thank you. Counselor Tontar?
I still have a concern, I mean, because I think it comes, I'll state, this is just my impression, again, I don't have access to the lawsuit, but I think to a large degree it comes down to what people mean by the term "structure," all right? Because that's the term that's in the contract. And I don't, you know, I don't have an easy answer to that, to what is meant by "structure." I think we, what the policy part of it is, we need to have a much more definitive definition in the future. And it could be that, that the lawsuit is also, has to do with the definition of the term "structure" in the contract. So it would apply.
Counselor Eggerman, excuse me, Counselor Z, did you want to jump in first?
I'll yield for a moment. Thank you.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, the, the church is not disputing that windows were covered, it's just which windows. Because the question is, you know, how many? Motion to table.
Second.
No debate on this matter. We'll take a roll call vote on the motion to table the second.
Motion to table Communication Number 120. Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
No.
Counselor Earls?
Yes.
Counselor Eggerman?
Yes.
Counselor Jenta?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
No.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tontar?
No.
Counselor Connell?
No.
Leading six for motion to table, I believe. Motion passes.
Fair table. Perhaps we can take this up in two weeks. My recommendation to counselors is that you review the documents associated with this proposal, if that helps you, and we will make certain that the fund department checks with counsel and make sure that counsel is prepared to answer questions about this generic matter, if appropriate, at our next general meeting, when we're going to get our updates on litigation and, and legal issues. We're done? We're up to appointments, are we?
We are. We're at the second reading of appointments as follows. Appointment 82, Christopher Keely, 8 Payson Street, Assistant Harbor Master, Special Police Officer, until 12:31, 2022. Appointment 83, Adam Armstrong, 5 Buck Street, to the Harbor Commission as an alternate until 41, 2021. Likewise, Appointment 84, Walter Lozinski, 364 Merrimack Street, alternate Harbor Commission until 41, 2021. Appointment 85, Charles Griffin, 3 Vernon Street, to the Parks Commission, 51, 2022. And Appointment 87, Kevin Hunt, 14 10th Street, Veterans Agent until 41, 2020.
What is the will of counsel?
Motion to approve collectively.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Because this is second reading, we're gonna need to take these collectively as a roll call vote.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Earls?
Yes.
Counselor Eggerman?
Yes.
Counselor Jenta?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
I presume we had enough votes.
We have.
Let's look at orders. Order 90, please.
Order 90, reads as follows, March 1st, 2019. Soon to the Code of Ordinances, City Council hereby amends, approves the following schedule of fees and fines in the paid parking lots, subject to the introductory and time-limited discount incentives pursuant to regulations promulgated. Employee monthly pass for the garage set at $60 per month submitted, Counselor Z.
Motion to refer to Budget and Finance?
Second.
Moved and seconded by Counselor Khan, I believe. Discussion, Counselor Z.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I feel like this would be a sensible time, just to give you a quick update on what the Parking Advisory Committee has been busy with. As you know, there are two of us that sit on it, the War Two Counselor and myself, at the moment. So I would say, to summarize the past several months, I think we've been receiving complaints from just about most employers downtown about their different parking situations. Some cases want to park closer, in some cases, questions about customers and where they can park, but I think the number one has been employee parking and where employees can park. This specific order, at least the content behind it, was brought up at the last Parking Advisory Committee, where we had about 35 folks attending, talking about parking primarily on the west side of downtown was the heart of the concern. So as I'm sure you know, we have about over 100 spaces in the east lot, which are designated for permit use. We have some spaces in the west lot. Permits are not permitted in the Riverside Lot, and then employee permits in particular don't work in Green Street, and they do work in Prince Place, as well as Hales Court. That's kind of the current lay of the land. So this was talked about at length during the Parking Advisory Committee. It was not, we didn't take a vote on it in the Parking Advisory Committee yet, but I thought that this would be a sensible way to have a discussion about it. When you really boil it down or distill it, what's the change? An employee, based on what we've already passed, is that they could buy an $80 pass. That's the non, that's the non-resident rate, pardon me. And so we talked about it at length, and there seemed to be general positive feelings, I would say, towards offering something to employees. Didn't really know exactly where that was. I have spoken to the Finance Director myself, and I let him know that folks are asking for him to weigh in, so I will use this as an invitation to bring forward some proformas. If you know me, you know I've been deeply concerned about the finances of the garage, so that's no surprise. It's a little bit surprising, I guess, to hear concern from the administration when, for years, we've talked about how this was a no-brainer, and we even started with a 244 space, larger garage, and now we're worried about $20 for employees being a problem. So to the core of the issue, though, it's, it's really about equity and parity is the two words. So one is, you know, basically looking at downtown, you've got parking on the east side of downtown, using sort of State Street as the middle. What can you do or what can you offer to the west side? As a council, we are fairly limited in our options because we don't control the Riverside Lot. That's under control of the Trust, and the mayor's mentioned that there's some Trust revisions in progress. Maybe that will yield something in the future. East and west lots are under control by the New Report Redevelopment Authority. Don't need to clue you in on that one. One idea I've had, and I've shared with the parking clerk, is perhaps asking, the Redevelopment Authority would allow us to shift some of the permit spaces from the east lot to the west lot. That could be another sensible idea to fix this. But this is really the only one we have in control here, unless we're gonna make changes to the Green Street Lot, which is the next closest one. Hales Court and Prince Place are already employee parking friendly, so to say, are the permits work. So I leave you with that. I think it'd be nice to offer some equity on both sides, and when I said parity, what I mean is, we offer an employee permit right now for $160 a year. You'll remember, we recently debated that. We had a proposal for more, and we trimmed it back here on this council floor, maybe eight months ago, a year ago, down to 160. I think we started at 200 or 220. My memory is a little shy on that, short on that one. So you've got 160, and you're talking about $80 in the garage per month, which equates to 960 bucks a year. So that's the parity I'm talking about, 960 versus 160. Everybody acknowledges that the garage will be nice. Director Port is, doesn't want to get any snow office cars, so he's very much interested in parking in the garage, but can we get them a little bit closer, basically, is what we've been talking about? So I submit it to Budget and Finance. I look forward to the discussion, and I hope that Director Manning will provide us some numbers, and we can look at them together. Thank you.
Further discussion? Fair enough. And the proposal is to?
Refer to Budget and Finance.
Budget and Finance alone, is that the will of the council? Any no further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Order 91.
Order 91 is the ballot question on Section 41 of Chapter 139, Acts 206, granting real estate property tax exemptions for qualifying seniors, submitted by Counselor Tontar.
What is the will of the council?
A move that we consider, Order 91 and 92 collectively?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're gonna talk about these collectively. What is the will of the council on these collective items?
Motion to refer to Budget and Finance.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Counselor Vogel. Discussion, Counselor Z.
Just for the ease of posting, would you like to do Committee of the Whole, just in case anybody else wants to come?
Absolutely.
Talking about this for several months, it may make sense. Thank you.
It's a friendly amendment?
Friendly to me.
So the, the proposal is to refer to Budget and Finance, Committee of the Whole. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. No ordinances? I move to Committee. Budget and Finance?
Nothing, Mr. President.
Shocking. Education?
Thank you, Mr. President. This may be my first time in six years that Budget and Finance had nothing to afford. It's great. I'll take his time on it.
I thought I was afraid to do this.
Yeah, right. We had a great meeting with the school committee and the superintendent, and he gave us some nice slides, so I did make a copy, or the clerk made a copy for everybody. And I just, there's a lot of good information in here. I'm not gonna blow you with all of it, but the, the schools are putting their budget together right now, and it's nice to see how they're really coming together with it. One of the things that really struck me when we were talking to the superintendent is he said, you know, "We're really taking our parent councils serious, and, and when we're talking to the different principals of the school, we actually want to see the representatives from the parents with them, so we know that everybody's working together and everybody agrees on the ideas and the priorities put forward in each school," which was really nice to hear that. When we get down to the numbers, you can see FY 19, you're looking at about $29 million, 3.5% increase, which is about a million dollars extra this year from last year. Talks about, when you get a few pages into increases, where we've got contracts coming up, so you're, you're looking at about almost $700,000 in, in, in salary increases this year. And then we have expenses, special, special education up about 300 grand, sick leave buyback about 75, and then the, the school department's taking over grounds and field maintenance this year for the first time in many years, and that's about $100,000. So right now, as they look at their, their, their budget head injury, they're about $100,000 upside down. So they have about $1 million going in, but they have 1.1 of, of what they want. So they're, they're gonna hammer out that, that difference. They talked a little bit about school choice. We have, I believe, 15 children in, in school choice this year, but we are having four children coming from overseas, which is really interesting. Three from China and one from Switzerland. And the reimbursement for those children is pretty high. It's about almost $17,000 per student. And so that is a program they're very interested in, and they're also looking to have host families. And these children would stay for us, with us for about 10 months, and then they, they need to go home. We had quite a discussion on why, why they need to leave. Special education costs, it breaks down all the numbers for you, if you're interested in looking at that. Overall, the school system's down about 100 students. And then it gets into the direct line items of, you know, the central office, the middle school, the elementary school, et cetera, about what, what they're focused on, what the new things that they want to get involved in their, into their school. So that's pretty much what I have to share for you. I didn't want to get into too much of the nitty-gritty of it, but I do ask you to go home and give it a read. There's a lot of good information in there. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Do you propose any action on this, or shall we?
I didn't formally submit it. I just, it's just a handout for you.
Very well, thank you. Counselor Tontar?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate what the chairman of the committee said, and it's Yeah, I just want to reiterate what the Chairman of the Committee said, and it's my sixth year as Chair of Budget and Finance, and this is, I really appreciate what the school department did in this case. This is the clearest presentation of their budget circumstances that I've seen yet. It was very good, and I would urge you to, I appreciate the fact that the Chairman handed it out to all of you, and I would urge you to take a close look at it. It will become very useful during budget discussions.
Anything else from Education, the Councilor?
Nothing more, sir.
Thank you. General Government, there's nothing in committee. License and permits?
Nothing to report.
Neighborhood and City Services?
Nothing to report.
Planning and Development?
Motion to remove Order 87 Preservation Restriction Agreement, 2830 Pleasant Street.
Sure. Motion to remove. Discussion? Moved and seconded. All those in favor, removing from committee? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's out.
Motion to approve?
Seconded by Councilor O'Brien. Discussion? Councilor Agarwal?
The Committee on Planning and Development met on this two weeks ago, Wednesday, and we recommended 3 to 0 to recommend approval. Just to give you the highlights, there was a $200,000 grant in cash given to the Unitarian Church by this body through the Community Preservation Act. As a condition of that, they were to place a preservation restriction on the exterior of their building. Just three details. Again, it's the exterior only, not the interior. Second, the building is defined to include all of the character-defining features of this 1801 building. And, you know, just to be clear, it does include windows. And then, third, this is just one of their buildings, so it only applies to the building. The second building is the parish house, which is not included, so be aware of that.
Thank you, Councilor. Further discussion? Councilor Tontar?
This is just in the realm of just curiosity, plus I've had experience with weathercocks with other communities. They can remove the weather vane? Essentially, that was, is that anomaly of the case? Is there any special circumstance as to why they, I mean, that, I believe it's a replica. I don't think it's the original. But did that happen? Is that why they can remove it?
Councilor Agarwal, would you like to respond?
We did not discuss that issue in committee. It is, the current one is a replica. I would argue that the weather vane is a character-defining feature, so I'm not quite sure why that's in there. Maybe if you could point to me?
It's on page eight.
Letter grab C.
Six. C.
I don't know. I mean, I do know the, it's the one on the old South Church. That is actually a replica, I know that. I'm not sure if this one is a replica. Maybe this is to preserve their property rights for sale or something. I don't know.
Yeah, I wouldn't, that could be.
It could be. That it, you have caught a problem, which would be, if they want to sell it, that's one thing, but what would they put in its place? It odd. I don't know how to respond to that.
Further discussion? Councilor Zede?
Thank you. First thing is just a remark. I mean, you know, obviously, these are getting special scrutiny this week, but page five, you know, says that the City Council funded the project on June 9th, 2016, so we clearly have a problem or a pattern, if you will. But my question is, I just happened to attend the committee meeting, and so, did the city solicitor offer a blessing on this document? I know that was a request of the committee, and do we have something that we can hang our hat on?
We have not yet received their confirmation that they've approved it as to form. Again, just as a reminder, for those of you who weren't involved, Council wouldn't be speaking about the substance of the restrictions, per se, leaving that to us, but they have not yet commented on it as to form.
If I may, then.
Councilor Agarwal?
Well, in that case, I like the light of the weathercock comment, and the fact that we don't have legal counsel blessing the form. Why don't we, I'll withdraw my motion. That's okay with Councilor?
So, the motion is withdrawn, there's nothing before us at this time on this matter?
Don't we have to vote on it?
Do we have to vote on that, or can he withdraw?
It's been removed, it's on the floor, so it should be referred back to committee.
Sorry, I couldn't hear the response, because it's in the conversation.
It's been removed, so it needs to be referred back to committee. I assume the Council would like to do that.
Is that a portion of your motion, withdraw and refer it back to committee?
Yes, a bigger part. My motion is to put it back in committee.
Second. So, let's vote on that. If there is no discussion, Councilor Zede?
I just would ask that the city solicitor give us something in writing, email it to us or something would be preferable, so we can get on with it next time. Thank you.
All those in favor of recommitting this matter, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Councilor. Is there anything else?
Yes, the Vice Chair, Councilor Jenta, is going to handle the next one. I'm recused on the next item, which is a conservation restriction.
Motion to remove Communication 11502?
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
It's out.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilor Tontar. Discussion? Councilor Tontar? Excuse me, Councilor Jenta.
So, we had a committee meeting on this, and the folks who own this property and their attorney were there. I guess I may have one question. Do we have a legal opinion on this one also?
My apologies, I sent both of them to Council at the same time, have not yet heard back from them on that one. I would like to, I assume they're going to come back to me with both of them at the same time. You should, Councilors, also be aware that these are template-driven documents, the state needs to approve as to form as well. That doesn't diminish the need for us to get a response back from legal counsel, but I just wanted to let you know that there is also a set, another set of eyes that will be looking at it at the state.
Is this one time-sensitive?
Frankly, I don't believe that either one of them is time-sensitive. You know, there's the after-the-fact aspect of the church, but that doesn't mean that, you know, today or tomorrow is urgent. I think that can wait as well for a couple of weeks. Unfortunately, we're at that point, but yeah.
Okay, I'd like to remove my motion to approve and send it back to committee.
Second. Moved and seconded by Councilor O'Brien, I believe.
Me.
Councilor Tontar?
I second the first one.
I'll get you on both.
All right, so the motion is to...
Withdraw the motion.
Withdraw the motion and recommit. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Could someone inform Councilor Agarwal?
Who? I heard.
And I have to make an apology to Councilor Devlin, who came in after we were originally convened. Welcome, Councilor Devlin, he's been participating.
Oh, thank you.
I didn't recognize his participation, let the record show. He's here.
He's here.
Sorry, Jeff. Is there anything else in committee? Councilor Agarwal?
Yeah, just very briefly. First, the CPA has, is its own source of funds, so it should cover legal fees, too, so I don't want the Councilors to worry that by referring it to the city solicitor, that it's going to cost the city council anything. That's in the CPA's responsibility. Also, we have in committee two nominations, Anne Gardner to the Planning Board, and Wilbur Schenk to the Waterfront Trust, and I'll confer with my colleagues about when we can hear them, because we have to have a public hearing on that. And that's it, that's nothing further.
Thank you, Councilor. Public safety?
Yes, motion to remove Communication 86 from September 24, 2018.
Second. Moved and seconded by Councilor Zede, I believe, I heard it on the side of the table. All those in favor of removing from committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No?
Motion to approve? I'm sorry, nope. I withdraw that motion. Motion to receive and file?
Second.
Moved to receive and file, Councilor Jenta, I believe, seconded, Councilor Devlin, do you have anything to say on this matter?
About the, yes. Come here.
Discussion?
We met with the residents of East Boylston Street two meetings ago, and discussed their letter and their concerns. The chief of one among them was the, as you're coming up to East Boylston Street, trying to get it to the top of State Street, it's very dangerous, they can't see people. People travel at a high rate of speed, coming from the left and heading down towards the traffic circle. One of the suggestions we made was that they, and I asked that the Chair of the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee put them on the next meeting, which he did. We had a good discussion there. The residents came and got to hear from the DPS, and the engineer, and fire, and police directly, and it was a very productive discussion. One of the suggestions that we had made there was, or that one of the residents had made, was removing, there's been a parking space removed, so that they, you know, don't have parking right up to the edge of their street. They were talking about, they had requested maybe having another space removed, and I also said that I would go speak with the Ward Counselor about that, which hasn't happened yet, but I will. And so, we've just, there's some, you know, we've discussed and asked to receive and file it.
Receive and file. All right. Thank you, Councilor. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of receiving and filing this item, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is done. Anything else?
Motion to remove Order 84 from January 28, 2019, 15-minute parking Liberty Street.
Second. Moved and seconded. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's out.
Motion to approve?
Excuse me, and approved by Councilor Jenta. Discussion?
That's me, yes. Sorry. Actually, wasn't here for this public safety meeting, so a little slow on this one.
I'm going to let my committee members, new members, discuss this. It came out 1 for and 1 against for discussion, and I'm going to let the Councilors that were there discuss it.
Councilor Jenta?
So, yeah, I ran the committee meeting, and it did come out 1 to 1. Councilor O'Brien was against, I think he can speak to 15 minutes being too short, and this being something that we do in front of one storefront, and then possibly another storefront asks us, and then another storefront asks us, and sort of the Pandora box. I voted in favor of it, because it's what the Ward Counselor wants, so I haven't spoken to the folks this affects, but if the Ward Counselor thinks that this is a good thing for his ward, then I vote in support of that. So, I know there are some other thoughts that we'll hear from on it, so, but basically, what we're looking at here is two, three parking spots, one by the Daily News, and two spaces from State Street running in the easterly direction, which would be 15-minute parking. The idea would be, is you would go there, you would park, you would go and get a bagel, you would go and get a coffee, and then you'd be back in your car, and you'd be gone again. So, it's just turning over parking spots quickly, so people can get in and out, instead of having to park in long-term parking and walk all the way over there to do an activity that would only take you five minutes to do, and that's the idea behind it. I certainly see both sides of this. I see other businesses looking at that, saying, well, why don't I add this over here and over there? So, we do have to be careful of that, but I do understand the idea of putting a 15-minute space in front of a bagel shop or a coffee shop, so you can get as many customers in and out as quickly as possible. So, that's where we're at, folks, so I'm interested to hear other people's opinions.
Further discussion? Councilor Con?
Great, thank you, Council President. I attended the Public Safety Committee meeting as well, and I guess my, I'm actually not going to support this, and I'll explain why. I think one of the things I want to make sure we're doing is we're being, kind of looking collectively at downtown, and I think some of the things that came up, and we did ask the Parking Clerk some questions, too, is that some other locations might also be conducive to 15-minute parking, and one of the ramifications is signage. So, it's not like, oh, let's just try it here, and then think, okay, maybe we could change it, or we could add other locations. I kind of want to be a little bit more strategic, and if we are going to start doing something like this in terms of temporary or short-term parking, not temporary, short-term, then where would other locations make sense? And to look maybe collectively and comprehensively at our downtown, and then come up with that kind of plan of, here's where it makes sense, maybe at these street corners, and that way, when we do signage, too, we're being really strategic and buying bulk, or determining in general, how are we going to keep those spaces notified as 15 minutes, or even 30 minutes, which came up, too, in our conversation. So, I almost feel like we need to just pause, see what we're trying to achieve by having these short, you know, short-term parking locations, and then come up with a more comprehensive plan by looking at our downtown streets. So, yeah, so at this time, I'm not going to support you. Thank you.
Further discussion? Councilor Agarwal?
Yeah, as a sponsor, I probably should say something. So, first, I want to thank Councilor Jenta for giving it a chance. I wouldn't have put my name on it if I thought it was bad for the ward, but it did originate with the Parking Clerk. A couple of responses. One is, I never intended the three spaces to be, you know, an all-or-nothing deal. The idea was to give options to the council. The space that's right at the driveway for the Daily News is, of course, most convenient for the bagel shop, and then the two on State Street running easterly is most convenient for Starbucks.
On Liberty Street.
I will say, you know, Liberty Street is a special case, so I don't really think that the need has to be demonstrated. I do think, ideally, it would be good to commission a comprehensive study, and have someone out there observing and all that stuff, and interviewing. You would do an intercept of all the customers walking by and so on, but, you know, I dare say, we probably don't have the resources for that. So, if the council thinks it's a good idea, you know, I would be happy to accept an amendment to make this one space, but I think in our personal experience, and I can tell you as the Ward Two Counselor, it is important to keep, sort of grab-and-go businesses alive downtown, because otherwise, they're just going to get shunted out to Story Avenue or the traffic circle. And I know Councilor Vogel has a similar business, and, you know, you need turnover. People need to be able to run in, so I hope you won't trash the whole thing, but maybe cut it down. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Vogel?
Yes, thank you. I rise in favor of all three places, in fact. And speaking of my businesses, or my particular business on Pleasant Street, I don't think that it's like at all, you label it a coffee house, if you will, but it's really more of a long-term place to be. So, I'm not out of line here suggesting that a short-term parking space needs to be in front of, on Pleasant Street, per se, but I think that on Liberty Street, and I think on all these side streets, that there is an opportunity to take a look at short-term parking in front of the post office, places like that where you do grab-and-go. Again, the particular business that was referred to as being my business on Pleasant Street is really not a grab-and-go store. Comprehensive across the downtown, absolutely. I think we need to take a look at it. I mean, we all drive there, we all know that there needs to be some short-term parking spaces. When you walk around, you see people driving and so on and so forth, so I would like to take a look at it. It'd be fun to take a look at it and see where it might be appropriate. But in these particular cases, I say we go for all three of them, see what happens, and give them the opportunity. I am curious, I'm wondering if the Ward Two Counselor could answer the question, if anybody did speak with the business owners.
Councilor Agarwal?
I did not. The Parking Staff may have, I don't know.
Would the clerk like to address that?
Sure. To be honest, no. We did not go into Starbucks and say, would you like a quick 15-minute space? I think it's, I think it's not a leap in logic to think, yes, they would...
I would agree.
Likewise with Abraham's Bagels.
Thank you.
Councilor Zede?
I'm pretty mixed on this one, but I, this is what I would offer as an amendment. One would be to just do the one space by the Daily News building, try that, and two is, I don't know if this is friendly or not, but instead of 15 minutes, do 30 minutes. And the reason I want to do 30 is that 30 is, the only other short-term parking I know of, and I'm looking at the Parking Clerk to correct me, is really by the post office, and those are 30-minute spaces, so in the interest of, they are, I'm 99 percent of the point. I'm fairly certain they're 30-minute spaces, so in the interest of cohesion and not creating yet another zone, so now 15, 30, and then the two- or three-hour lots and so forth, to try 30. I go there often, and I think it's 30 minutes, but if I'm wrong, somebody will correct me.
You have proposed an amendment. You have proposed an amendment. Is this a friendly amendment to the sponsor?
Not on the 30 minutes. No, no, Mr. President.
I'm sorry, is, but there are two parts to that. Were there...
Let me do them separately, so make, make life a little easier. First motion is to strike the first extent, which is two spaces on the south side, beginning from State Street, running in the easterly direction.
I second that motion. All right, it's a friendly amendment. Discussion of the amendment.
What is, what's the amendment again?
It's a motion to strike two spaces on the south side, beginning from State Street, running easterly.
On that amendment, discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of adding that amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Two noes?
Three noes. Unknown.
Okay, three noes. Motion passes.
Now we revert to the original motion.
As amended.
As amended, thank you.
Yeah, it, what remains is one space on the north side, located west of the entrance to the Daily News parking lot.
Sounds good.
Discussion on that matter. Counselor Zied.
I'm just going to make the second half of my amendment, see if there's any interest in it. So it would be a motion to strike 15 minutes, 15, 1, 5 in parentheses minutes, and replace it with 30, 3, 0.
All right, discussion. Is there a second to that amendment, or is it a friendly amendment?
Not friendly.
Not friendly.
We need a second then. I guess that tells us. So we revert to the original motion.
The motion that stands on the floor is 15 minutes, one space.
One space. Counselor, Counselor Con.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I go back, I don't, I'm not imagining an extensive study to do this, this kind of review of, of parking in our downtown. I think the, the parking clerk has a lot of good information, and I think it might just be a simple matter of walking around and seeing where we do have 15-minute if we do, where we have 30-minute. How many do we have? I think it doesn't take that much of an effort to maybe take a look at this and then bring to the council here maybe a fully vetted and well-thought-through kind of location map. So, wanted to throw that out there.
Good. And would the clerk like to respond?
I would. Regardless of how the vote goes, I'd be happy to do that. We originally thought about Pleasant Street and Liberty Street. There's also State Street. Generally those three streets. But because the parking officers are out there every day, I can collect their comments. They would be happy to do some column. I wouldn't call it informal, but less than an expensive exhaustive study. We'd just get some good information and present it to the parking advisory committee first, if that's okay.
I think that sounds sensible. Further discussion on the motion. Counselor Tontar.
Actually, I just have a request as you're gathering information, and if we do this 15-minute lot, if we can see how much of the day that lot is empty. Right? That, I mean, just, just note of it, that, that one space is empty. So, you know, if no one's using it because it's too short a period of time, then we know, we've found out everything we need to know.
Counselor Agaman.
All I wanted to do was let everyone know, if, if you look at the, at the proposed ordinance, there is a 15-minute section. I didn't create that. That's an existing section, 13-1, 76.2. Right now, there's only one location that's identified. It's on Merrimack Street, 228, I think it is. 226. But, so this is not a new concept.
Thank you. Further discussion. The clerk review the motion, please.
There's, the motion standing on the floor is 15-minute space, one space, north side, located west of the entrance to the Daily News parking lot. Roll call, Mr. President.
No, I think we can do the voice vote on this. All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
That would be two noes. Counselor Con, Counselor Earls, thank you.
Thank you, councilors.
Motion to remove Ordinance 89 from February 11, 2019.
Second. Moved and seconded. Take out of committee. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's out.
Motion to approve.
Second. Moved and seconded. Discussion. Counselor Devlin, I'm, I'm from you.
This came out two to nothing in favor. It's for a handicap parking space on Lower Custom House Way. I did receive correspondence from the chair of our Commission on Disabilities. He's also greatly in favor of this in, in providing access to, to the custom house in, in that area of town with another handicap parking space. Again, I wasn't privy to the rest of the discussion, but it's two to nothing.
Two to nothing. Further discussion. Counselor Jenta.
Thank you. I'm up again. So, yes, this is about creating a handicap parking spot to, if you're looking at the custom house, to the area of the right of the custom house. We were a little confused about Northerly, so I, we, we changed it to Southerly because we believed that Southerly would be the first parking spot, so that would put you closest to the door, where Northerly would put you the farthest away from the door. And that was, again, unanimous decision.
So you're reporting out, the reporting out of committee was a, an amended version. Is that what you're saying?
I guess I would, yes.
Does this, does the committee?
Yes.
All right. So what, the motion on the floor refers to...
It would be...
Parking space on the southern side.
Yeah, one, one space on Lower Custom House Way at the Southerly and proximate to Water Street. Okay, just so we're all on the same page. Thank you.
Further discussion. Counselor Agaman.
Yeah, I, I put this one in after a complaint from a handicap resident who formerly was, she believed, able to park there. There was also a complaint about a space that had been moved at the Tannery, but that's, that's being handled by staff. It, it should be Southerly. That's just a Scrivener's error.
Yeah.
But just to be clear, you know, this is a, Lower Custom House Way, as, as many will remember, was litigated in the 1920s, and so the public does have an undisputed right to this area where the, where the parking space will go. Right now, it's, it's cut off by planters, so this will open it up and make it usable again to the public. Thank you.
Further discussion. Counselor Zied.
My only question was actually about the planters. So there's more than one space there, right? So is the plan that all the planters will go, one space will be a handicap space, and the other spaces will again be open to use, or are we going to put, just move the planters over? Because there, there are, I think, three or four spaces on that side. No? Two? Two?
Counselor Agaman?
Answer the question. The, the only directive to staff would be to open one space.
Okay.
If, if the DPS, who has jurisdiction over the public way, wants to do more, they could, but that's not the proposal at this time. Frankly, you know, the, the overall long-term status of Lower Custom House Way, which used to go all the way to the river, is still up in the air with New England Development, the fee owner. So that was not addressed in this order.
Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to remove Communication 117 from February 25, 2019, Flag Day, 5K.
Is there a second?
Second.
Counselor O'Brien is seconded. All those in favor of taking this out of committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's out.
Motion approved.
Second. Moved and seconded. Discussion.
Yes, I discussed this with Steve Hines today. It's being run exactly as it's been run in the past. It's a good event, and it came out two to nothing, pending receipt of the insurance certificate.
Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to remove Communication 118 from February 25, 2019, the chocolate tour from Central Congregational Church.
Second.
Moved and seconded. I didn't, I think it was Counselor Tontar, seconded. All those in favor, it means from committee, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's out.
Motion approved.
Second. And I heard a second. I believe it was Counselor O'Brien or Counselor Zied.
Zied.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes, I spoke to Diane Hawkins today, and this two is being run in the same way it's been run for the last 16 years, and it came out two to nothing in favor.
Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's done.
Nothing further.
Public utilities.
Yes, Mr. President, just a quick update on the wastewater treatment plant, in case you're interested. So last meeting, we had a long discussion about rail trails and wastewater treatment plants. So I attended the water sewer commission. I think the ward three councilor also made an appearance. So, long, to keep a long story short, I think the water sewer commission is, is sort of learning about this too, probably the way I would characterize it without editorializing it too much. And the next major step, I think, is to hear from Duberry. The mayor mentioned that in her mayor's update. That probably is the next major step, because there's, what seems to me, and this is my interpretation, is that, you know, in order to build the trail, the trail has to go up. We know that. Then there's another level of up that would provide some protection from the plant, and then whether there's more up from there that may provide more protection for the plant, we don't know. We're talking about, is a berm, a large berm, and there will be some implications for neighbors, which will become important, because the berm eventually has to wrap around. It can't just stop. So the American Yacht Club's kind of on one end, there's some residents on the other, so a lot to be discussed, I guess, is what I would say, and just thought I would offer that to you as an update, so you're aware.
Thank you, Council. Anything else from committee?
No, Mr. President.
Rules committee.
Nothing tonight.
Good of the order. A couple. I'll let the clerk start.
Just, I guess, asking for your approval. We came up with the idea, with Counselor Vogel, to put in bold and underline any items coming out on the agenda, and it looks nice to me, and I thought I would try it if it's okay with the council. In a narrow sense, it could be a rules change, but I don't think you need to go through that. If it's okay with the council, I would continue with that.
Yes.
Yes.
Good idea.
Yep.
Thank you.
Good suggestion, Council. Thank you. Counselor Zied.
I just had two things. One is, I really wanted to thank everybody for listening about the idea about setting committee meetings in advance. I know particularly Chair Tontar, Budget Finance, greatly appreciate. I know it's not easy to, to put together, so I appreciate it, and I know the Planning, Development Chairs have done the same, and maybe other chairs are considering. So I just wanted to express my gratitude for that. It's already made a difference for me, and I appreciate it. The other one is, I wanted to build on your idea, something I've been thinking about for a while, which is that if we have in the, I want to propose this for your thought, perhaps, is that if we have in the agenda underlying and bold what's coming out of committee, that when we vote for the consent agenda, we can use that as our vote to take things, to take everything out of committee at that time, unless a specific council wants to pull something out. So in other words, we spend collectively 10 to 20 minutes, I think, every meeting, taking things out of committee. Motion to take it out. Yes. Does everybody agree? Discussion, then we wait. So my, my proposal is, when we vote on the consent agenda, we are also at that time taking everything that's bold and underlined out of committee in that same vote, and if a counselor disagrees, because we have had some controversies about whether something can come out, you can pull it out and we can take that. It just remains in committee and has to be processed under our normal rules, which is motion removed. I really do think, particularly in heavy committee nights, where you've got 20 things coming out of five committees, you could do all those, just the removal from committee with one single vote. I think it would, I think it would be, so I'm going to go to the next Rules Committee meeting, because I know there's already a proposed rules, and I'll, I just wanted to throw it out there for your consideration. It's a repetitive task, but I think you could shave off a minute or two off every committee item that way.
All right, fair enough. I would remind the councilors that the charter instructs us to have a report from the city solicitor in February of each year. I want to thank Counselor Zied for catching that, and the solicitor will be making his presentation to us. He was invited for tonight. There was a conflict that he couldn't resolve. I thought it best to have the, the lawyer from KP Law, who deals with most of our matters, speaking on behalf of their firm, and not have some substitute there who couldn't answer our questions. So I put it off till our next general meeting, at which time we'll have an opportunity to question the solicitor. I will note in, in advance, however, there may be some things that, in his judgment, we should discuss in executive session. So there's a possibility that we will take part of that report in executive session. That's to be determined. Counselor Vogel.
Yeah, just one last thing in response to the counsel from Ward 1, 6:30, next meeting.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome. It's 6:30, next city council meeting.
Oh, got it. Okay.
Counselor Agaman.
Yeah, since you opened the door on the, the annual report, last year's, I, I fully agree, if there are things that are sensitive and have to be in closed session, we should do that. But just for the record, last year's report was not complete. I mean, we were aware of some litigation from the press, from the Daily News, that was not reflected in the report, and I, I hope that mistake is not repeated.
I'm sure the administration's paying careful attention, is going to make note of that, and I will talk to the, to our solicitor in advance of the meeting to make sure that he's, going to give us a full report. Clerk.
Yeah, Mr. President, I think if the possibility exists, and I know it does, that we would go into executive session, we need to post that in the agenda.
Yes.
And so I would plan on putting that in.
So the process...
Whether or not we actually do.
Yeah. The process that I would suggest is that I will talk to the solicitor in advance of the meeting. If in his judgment, part of, we'll have to go into executive session, the clerk will post it that way, you know, as, as the possibility, and we'll proceed, you know, at our next meeting with, with that in mind. Is that fair to the members? Counselor Agaman.
Yes, but I just want to be crystal clear. If, if the city solicitor is going to invoke any kind of privilege vis-à-vis us, that there's something that he cannot tell us, I would like that done in the record.
Thank you. Very well. Further discussion, or, I'm sorry, good of the order. Then I'll contain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're out of here.